What's up everybody? Welcome into another episode breaking down stuff going on in the Karen Reed case. Announcement was made about Kevin Albert's suspension in a Canton Select Board meeting, but so much more happened. A bunch of you guys sent me this and I was like, I'm not really sure there's anything legally I can break down or add to the table, explaining something from a legal angle, which is really the only types of things I like to break down on this, but I was wrong. The first half of this meeting had a lot of fireworks, a lot of explosive comments and conversations, but also things that could absolutely affect Canton, the citizens, potential jurors, a jury pool and Karen Reed's second trial if and when it happens. So there is plenty to break down. We are going to take a look at it. It's not going to be an incredibly long video. There's only about 20 minutes of the actual meeting we're going to watch and listen to, but make sure you guys hit the like button. Thank you for sending me this. If you send me stuff that you're interested in and you have questions about, I'll do my best to answer it if I can, and if I feel like I can add some value to the conversation. So hit the like button if you haven't. Make sure you subscribe to our page. Let's get into it. And also off the top, thank you to the Young Jerks channel that posted this unedited video in its, you know, normal form. So it seemed, and so we just get to watch and hear and listen to what happened. So as a little bit of background before we get into it, I've been on a couple of boards and you know, obviously I've litigated a bunch of cases, but the interesting aspect of being on a board is your actions sometimes have to be parsed. Are they personal or are they actions as a member of the board? And the reason that's important is because the people you represent as a board member could potentially be liable. Their pocketbooks, their checkbooks, their money could pay for your bad acts. And when I was on the board, I was on an HOA board a few years ago, it was miserable. I don't recommend it. But there was a case that had already been going on before I was on the board and we looked into it and we looked into kind of fighting with a homeowner about certain things. They said the HOA should pay for, and they shouldn't, and they sued the HOA and the HOA ended up winning, but the HOA lawyers screwed something up to where the attorney's fees for the losing party, they were saying they were entitled to attorney's fees. It was a whole mess. So I looked into it to try to help them out with it. And at the end of the day, the HOA had to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, A, defending the case, just defending it, and then B, fighting to not have to pay attorney's fees. And where does that money come from? It comes from the members of the neighborhood who have to pay HOA dues. We had to raise our HOA dues because of these legal fees. It wasn't me. Obviously I wasn't representing either side. I was just actually on the board who has to approve legal fees and choose the lawyers that are going to represent us. But it all costs money if you get sued in your official capacity. If the board gets sued, even if you win, it can cause the people you represent, it can cause them to have to spend money. So with that in mind, the people are the ones in charge. They're the ones affected. With that in mind and with that kind of context, let's take a listen to this board meeting.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We are resuming our open session. We had an executive session earlier, so we are just resuming our open session at seven o'clock. But welcome to the select board.
That's not abnormal to have some parts of the session closed, some parts open. That's all he's saying there.
Of July 9th. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Canton Community Television and our vice chair, Mr. McCourt is out of town, so he will not be joining us. So first item on the agenda is again, public comments.
By the way, this is Chris Albert here on the left, the bald guy in the suit with the Duncan. And so I made myself smaller so we could take a look at him. He's going to be making some statements and comments in this meeting as well.
So as I have been doing previously, it will read this statement. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedbacks, feedback and concerns. But the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question and answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. A public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and three minutes per speaker. I would encourage those that do.
So only five minutes, I'm sorry, only five speakers max. These types of rules are not abnormal. They don't want to be a back and forth because they don't have all day to do it. You know, it's not necessarily them hiding things. Sometimes it feels like that with every board, not just this board, but basically public comments limited to three minutes, 15 minutes total. So five people basically max if they all use their time.
To speak, to be mindful of others in the room who wish to do the same, so that we can make the most of the time allotted and hear from as many people as possible. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who was unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. The select board will also announce the next open office hours at our next select board meeting.
And also, people ask, what can you do? What can I do if I feel like there's wrong, wrong action going on, wrongdoing that is not being taken care of, it's not being taken seriously? I'm a citizen. All of the, you know, cops and firefighters and government employees are getting paid out of your tax dollars, you know, maybe not directly, but you get how it all works and it does affect you. So what can you do? This is one of the things you can do. You can go make public comments and if you don't have, if you're not within the time period to actually make the statement audibly, you can turn it into writing.
So that being said, we will begin our public comment period at 7:01. So, Ms. Smith?
Christine. Charlie Duty let me know that his office would work on this and they thought it would make sense. After submitting my comments, Town Administrator Charlie Duty let me know that his office would work on this and they thought it would make sense to perform a complete update of the administrative code, not just this one section. And that made total sense to me. I offer my sincere thanks to Mr. Duty as well, as well as to Jen Chameleon from the Select Board Office for all of their work on this issue. However, the revision to the standards, policies and ethics seems to have gotten a little derailed. I'm not sure if it was due to an attempt to include other boards, or maybe this is going to fall under the bylaw modernization committee. I'm not sure. But either way, we continue to see that certain select board members continue to ignore the spirit of the current guidelines, notably swearing out and threatening to assault an individual on the sidewalk right in Canton Center.
Again, so this is going to start to touch on board members' actions outside of the board, but in Canton and how they're acting. Is it unbecoming of a board member? Is it their official capacity in Canton, dealing with citizens of Canton or people that come to visit Canton? And she's, I think, referencing the Turtle Boy interaction that a lot of people sent me, you know, what the heck is this? What's going on? Well, now it could be becoming a much bigger problem in Canton if they're trying to point it to his official capacity as a board member, which doesn't seem like official board member work. But all it takes is the accusation, all it takes is the allegation, all it takes is the lawsuit for it to potentially affect the citizens of Canton.
I stand here today to renew my request with the Select Board to take action on this matter. You represent the town and all the citizens, not just the ones who voted for you. And yes, as public officials, you are held to a higher standard. This continued behavior reflects poorly on the town and has the potential to expose the town to liability. To be clear, this is not about the Reed case or.
And again, when she says opens the town up to liability, if there's some big lawsuit, right? And you know, whether it's Turtle Boy or somebody else that says a board member does something to them in their official capacity and they were injured or had some mental distress and some jury gives them a $500,000 verdict. Who carries the brunt of that? Because it's not the board member individually. It's the citizens of Canton. Now they can have insurance, but if they have insurance, again, that comes out of the budget that the citizens pay for. So it all comes back to the citizens of Canton. And who are the citizens of Canton as far as Karen Reed and her trial go? They are the past and future jurors for this case. They are the ones making decisions on witness credibility, on guilt or innocence. They are the fact finders. And they are the people potentially directly affected by board member actions. It's really interesting to see how this could all potentially connect.
Other matter. It is about leadership and leading by example. It is disingenuous to sit there and object to lack of civility when one of your own members acts in an uncivil manner with no comment or consequences from the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
And I feel like I needed to highlight, she was cool, calm, collected, said what she needed to say and moved on. No badgering, no anger, no yelling. Not everybody is quite like that in this meeting.
Hello, Ken. I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Colleen O'Neal. Where I firmly worked at FNF Power Equipment on Wallpole Terrace in Canton, Mass. alongside my longtime boyfriend, Jeffrey Farrington, a longtime Canton resident whose father retired as captain of the Canton Fire Department. Recently, we were informed by the Town Secretary Charles Duty that our case regarding commercial vehicles parked overnight was on the agenda. Today, an executive session that was held at 6:15 PM tonight was held to discuss litigation concerning Wallpole Terrace. Despite enduring significant harassment while working in Canton, Massachusetts, I have since moved my career to Boston, specifically working on Mass Ave, known as Mass and Cass, where individuals face some severe drug addiction and dual diagnosis, mental health disorders reside on the streets. The ongoing harassment from Canton, including unjust fines, unwarranted visits from a sexual predator, Canton cop Eric Wade and personal property.
I could be wrong. I don't think this has anything to do with the Alberts or the Karen Reed case. But just in case it did, I didn't want to skip through it. So we'll kind of listen to her speak here. And then I think the next one is back, back in on something relevant.
Issues involving another corrupt Canton officer, Charles Ray.
Theoretically, I guess, calling Canton officers corrupt, anybody could say that connects to the Karen Reed case. I'm not seeing the specific connection.
Who altered zoning regulations in 2016 has compelled me to leave the area. I now collaborate directly with the Massachusetts State Government to provide housing for people with severe mental health illness. I have reached out to Governor of the Massachusetts, Mara Healy and Boston Mayor Michelle Wu regarding Jeffrey Farrington's property on Wallpole Terrace proposed, proposed, proposing the construction of 40B housing for housing undocumented immigrants. The town of Canton has caused immense emotional distress to our business and personal lives over the past 13 years. Tonight, I speak out in hope that Canton residents will support a small business that has thrived for over three decades, contributing to taxes and community welfare. It is crucial to recognize that 40B, 40B housing in Canton, Massachusetts is our last option to halt this relentless cycle of lawsuits and police misconduct and unfair fines that plague running a business in Canton, Massachusetts. This clown town of Canton has caused nothing but harassment to a small business and caused extreme emotional distress to Jeff's and I personal relationship. This harassment needs to end.
And again, that is potentially liability for the city of Canton if it's legit and if police officers are harassing them in their official capacity. Now again, this is also giving us an idea and why it's relevant of how government officials, they take certain actions that cause damages to people, lawsuits can come. The local and even statewide government potentially could be liable. The citizens could pay if they have insurance policies, they could pay. And this all connects to a question everybody's asking is will Karen Reed do anything civilly at some point throughout this entire saga? And you're seeing that she wouldn't be the only one making these types of accusations.
Sean Culver. Mr. Chairman, I would like to address some questions I have for you guys. Since we weren't afforded the opportunity two weeks ago to address items that were listed on an agenda with the reappointment of the police chief and I had planned on going by through and asking each one of you guys how you voted and what you, some of the questions you asked her were. How was the determination decided on to reappoint Helena Rafferty to the, to a one-year contract?
This is important too, and this does connect to the case. They appointed over some people's objections, the police chief renewed her for another year. And they have major problems and unanswered questions. And these people, I got to be honest with you, most local communities don't do this. They don't hold their elected officials accountable so much like these people do. And again, there's an appropriate way. And as he's starting, seems very cool, calm and collected. He has legitimate questions he's written down that he wants answers to.
Did you interview and assess her performance one-on-one or was it done as a group? Does the chief recognize the missteps that have occurred in the Canton Police Department investigation in the death of the officer, of Officer John O'Keefe? Can you tell us what some of the questions you asked her were? What if anything did you ask her about her department's lack of following proper procedures and policies?
What if anything, he threw in a little lally there?
What if anything did any of you ask her about the importance of interviewing, separating witnesses and recording witness statements? What if anything did you ask her about?
And you notice that these objections and questions that he have come directly from the trial. I think they're completely fair. I think honestly, if I was John O'Keefe's family, I would want answers to these questions. Because the investigation and the way it happened is, has a cloud of doubt over the entire trial. And if Karen Reed did it and they could have proven it, the way they did the investigation blew that opportunity. So what is she doing to change that? Is she at least recognizing it? And we're not just talking about Proctor's texts, right? Everybody will stand up and condemn and distance themselves from Proctor's texts. But what about the investigation? What about the shoddy police work? What about the policies and procedures and protocols? Are those being condemned? Are those being changed? Cause they even testified a lot of the cops that that's just not how we do it. We don't record interviews. Well, that's not good enough. And these are very legitimate questions to ask to somebody whose salary you take part in paying. And if she's not going to do it, let's get somebody in there who will, who will clean this place up. Very legitimate question. And again, if she were to come out and condemn those policies and procedures and change those policies and procedures, that could potentially be fodder for cross-examination in trial too. If the police chief came out and said, they did that wrong. You don't collect evidence in solo cups. You're supposed to record interviews. That could be questions that they ask these law enforcement officers. Well, now that's different, right? And post-remedial measures and civil cases probably would not apply to this because if she comes out and condemns and says what they did was wrong, now that's part of the second trial. That not only does common sense tell you it's wrong, but the new police chief tells you it's wrong.
In witnesses and recording witness statements. What if anything did you ask her about the collection of evidence, the proper storage of evidence in the chain of command on evidence collection? What if anything did you ask her about recognizing and adhering to conflicts of interest? You know, such as when the chief at the time, Chief Berkowitz called District Attorney Michael Morrissey's office at 8:30 AM on January 29th and talked about the Canton Police Department recusing themselves because of a conflict of interest. Went through testimony, we learned that the Canton Police Department actually did not adhere to this recusal. We had a Canton Police Officer, Kevin Albert, arranging witness interviews days later after they were recused. At 8:30 AM on the 29th, the state police took control of this investigation. Why were the Canton Police Officers in the Sally Port at 5:00 PM on January 29th?
By the way, you hear a mention of Kevin Albert, there's going to be more, more questions about Kevin Albert, because at this point, they don't know that he's been suspended.
Why was an ATF agent also in the Sally Port?
Should say put on leave.
The ATF has no jurisdiction on this case at all, yet Brian Higgins was allowed to be there. Who were the three officers that were not identified at 34 Fairview? Did any of you ask her how an inverted videotape was turned in as evidence? Did any of you ask her how 40 minutes is missing off the Sally Port video? How about the library video? And what if anything was done in regards to the testimony and the text messages read from state police sergeant? When they were driving around the Cape in a state police cruiser shitfaced and the Canton Police Officer, Kevin Albert lost control of his badge and his gun.
That's pretty huge. And we talked about that in the trial. That's not good. That's at least conduct unbecoming of an officer. And when we talk about people being put on administrative leave, a lot of people think that's the reason why, the connection to that story. Other people asking, why did that story ever come out? Well, they were asked, can't commit perjury. It happened. It was true. And I think they knew about it from some prior statements.
Were there ever any, were they ever recovered? Was, or was there any disciplinary action, disciplinary action taken?
And it's kind of embarrassing, embarrassing that the answer was no until now. They knew about this. All this stuff happened back then and nothing happened until the trial, you know, highlighted at all.
Think these are just a few of the things that come to mind. This is your job to ask these questions, not mine. We are the taxpayers as a community. We, we should have been afforded the opportunity to ask these questions two weeks ago on an item that was listed as an agenda item. You were in violation of mass open meeting law. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that comment completely. He heard his bell. He was done. Cool, calm and collected, but hard and straight to the point. He brought facts and evidence from the trial that nobody can really argue is not true. Cause we heard it all come out, things he has problems with, things that he directly affect him as a taxpayer. A plus comment.
Ms. O'Donnell?
The American Revolution began in 1775 as an open conflict between the United 13 colonies in Great Britain. Many factors played a role in the desires to fight for independence. Not only did these issues lead to a war, but they also shaped the very foundation of the United States of America. The Americans felt that they should have equal rights to the Englishman. The British, on the other hand, thought that the colonies were created to be used in the ways that best suited the crown and the parliament. This seems a lot like our current reality in Canton. This conflict embodied in one of the rallying cries of the American Revolution. No taxation without representation. To me, this sounds like our current day Canton. While we pay all our taxes, our services leaders and police departments only service the entitled selected few. While those entitled in our governance try to silence our concerns. Another driving force behind the revolution was an outcry against the judicial system that was in place, offering yet another airy comparison, ironically enough, involving six British soldiers. After six British soldiers were acquitted and two dishonorably discharged for the Boston massacre, the British government changed the rules. From then on, officers accused of any offense in the colonies would be sent to the England for trial. This meant that fewer witnesses would be on hand to give their accounts of the events and led to even fewer convictions. Wouldn't it be nice to watch Proctor's hearings for his indiscretions? This makes matters even worse.
It is kind of cool to see just your average citizen and layperson get involved in the law and the history of the freedoms in our country and how we got them and why we got them and what we mean, what we mean by taxation with representation and how, you know, these board members are supposed to represent the people. They're supposed to protect the interests of the people, the taxpayers, cops, all government officials are supposed to answer to the people that pay their salaries. And sometimes they are so disrespectful and they think that they are, you know, king of the castle or queen of the castle. And the way they treat people, it's like, have you forgotten how this works and that you're a public servant? And what that means to be a public servant? Not our boss. But when people aren't held accountable, and again, the judicial system is supposed to help with that. And sometimes in the past it hasn't, and sometimes now it hasn't. But it's supposed to be the even, even and level playing field. I just found this interesting overall. I'd never watched one of these before.
Jury trials were replaced with verdicts and punishments handed down directly by colony judges. Over time, the colonial authorities lost power over this as well because the judges were known to be chosen, paid and supervised by the British government. Again, dauntingly familiar, the right to a fair trial by jury of their peers was no longer possible to many. John Adams once said, facts are stubborn things and whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of the facts and the evidence. What frightens me most is even after watching the same trial for 10 weeks, so many still blindly trust and follow the corrupt and avoid the facts and evidence that would have convicted Karen Reed. There is lack of it. To bring justice for John O'Keefe, rather they chose to keep supporting those who have factually been proven to be corrupt and dirty.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
To those.
Ms. O'Donnell, that's it.
Who find our fight.
Be fair, okay? She should probably stop. I realize she has more to say. But, and she's been cool, calm and collected. It's been three minutes. You know how long you have. Everybody knows the rules. Everybody should play by the rules. I'm sure what she has to say is important and we're going to listen to it, but now it creates an atmosphere where in my opinion, you get less accomplished. I think the guy before her was probably the hardest hitting, could have gotten the most accomplished with his comments. I think you start to lose respect and people's attention. Obviously I think she doesn't care and she thinks they don't respect the people they should, that they are corrupt and that they're horrible people anyways. I'm sure she already thinks that, but just my, my two cents is always, you know, play within the rules, push back, do what you can. But I also understand the other side of the argument that when they're breaking the rules and they're making the rules and, you know, all those issues, but I do think you lose effectiveness when you push a little too hard.
I'm gonna ask you to settle down.
In our American rights.
I'm gonna ask you to leave.
So unacceptable to tonight. I quote Captain John Paul James Jones, 1779. I have not begun to fight.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Little bit of chaos starts here.
I'm following the rules. We live in America too.
Ms. O'Donnell, please.
Talking to me, but I will stay quiet. No need to leave. Exercising my first amendment.
Okay, I'm going to speak. I'm going to speak now.
Ms. O'Donnell, you're being disrupted to the meeting. I'm asking you to leave. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm answering you. I said I would stand here quietly. I will stand here.
She only went over a few minutes, a minute. Okay, I'm gonna. Come on, we were in crisis. I know it's my imagination. I know it's my imagination.
All right, folks, folks, please be respectful. Ms. Lombardi, this is it?
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, listen, Rita Lombardi. And I can't believe I'm standing here about to say what I'm going to say. My ancestry goes back in this town to the very early 1900s. And I've always had respect for the Canton Police and the Fire Department because my ancestors served on them proudly. And I always admired them. And I'm shocked that I'm having this discussion right now. But anyways, the issues that we've had in town relate to safety and trust issues. And last week or whatever, you approved the police chief's contract and many of us were opposed to that. And I just want to share some of the reasons why we have trust issues here. In 2018, the Canton Police Department responded to a car accident on Pleasant Street near Meadows, but did not locate the driver. An hour or so later, a pass by located the body of Craig Casey. This last year, when questioned by a concerned citizen, Chief Rafferty's response was, it wouldn't have made a difference to his survival. Instead of owning this failure, it just, that's what, that was her explanation. In 2021, the Canton Police Department ruled Sandra Birchmore's death a suicide. It was recently confirmed that Sandra was in fact murdered, something many citizens already knew. Yet there has been zero acknowledgement of this policing failure by Chief Rafferty or an apology to Sandra's family that I am aware of.
So these problems and a lot of these comments do not start and end with Karen Reed. It was highlighted, it was broadcast, but there are other major issues and fair questions to be asked.
In 2022, the Canton Police Department responded to the scene of Officer John O'Keefe's murder. The mishandling of the crime scene, the investigation and the evidence collection was gross incompetence at best and will be taught in criminal law classes for decades to come on how not to handle a murder crime scene. Instead of Chief Rafferty addressing these performance issues.
I guess that comment probably not true. Probably not for decades to come because it's, again, maybe I'm making her point for her. It's so obviously wrong and bad and not how you should do it, that it's not something that's a real novel issue. In law school, we pick the difficult stuff to really dig into and make a big deal about because that's law school, right? And a lot of it is hypothetical and not what actually happens in real life. So maybe given as an example, but I don't think it takes too much to dig into, don't use red solo cups and stop and shop bags to collect evidence, which maybe that's making her point for her.
Appropriate corrective action, many if not all involved have been promoted. In any organization, rewarding poor performance not only damages employee morale, it increases employee turnover, both of which are extremely costly. Canton PD has an 18% turnover in the past two years. Oftentimes it is your best employees who seek employment elsewhere, not the performance problem. If unchecked, your organization will continue on a downward spiral. In the John O'Keefe murder trial, we learned that it was Chief Rafferty who turned over the Sally Port surveillance video to the Mass State Police. We also learned that in addition to 42 minutes missing from this footage and people disappearing from the screen and the footage was inverted, something no one has ever heard of in their life. Six weeks it took her to report the February accident, which almost cost the man his life. And now we're being sued for that. And we're going to get sued for all these other cases as well. Policies and procedures are great, but there's no consequences when they're not.
And, and she said something important there. They've been sued, they're being sued, and we know we're going to be sued in the future. It's almost like these people expect a lawsuit from Karen Reed. The citizens are agreeing and saying that their government made major mistakes and issues. And now they, she, this woman who seems obviously like a Karen Reed supporter is going to have to bear the brunt of the cost and the money that they are going to have to pay out in a lawsuit if one comes and if they lose. But even if they win, they're going to have to. But even if they win, they're going to have to pay for lawyers, like I mentioned off the top. So lawsuits coming even from Karen Reed, someone I think a lot of these people probably support is bad for them. So who's going to do something about it? And if we're just putting this police chief in play back in position who was part of the problem, are you costing us more money? Are you doing things that are against our interests? Are you hurting us even more? And if that's the case, and now the citizens of Canton are turning on their government, how's that going to affect the trial? Do we need to change the venue? Is it going to be unfair for the Commonwealth? Should they want to change this venue? Those are all very real and legitimate questions that I think could affect the second trial.
Not followed, just rhetoric that we'll do better next time. That just doesn't cut it. The Canton Police Department in this town is facing countless and costly lawsuits as a result of their actions. We do not feel safe. And that is why. Okay, I'm not speaking for you because you're part of the selected few. I'm talking about me, common folks. I'm talking about me, the random citizen. That's who I'm talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
Anyone who's related to the McGalberts, you're safe, but not us. So stop it.
I'm sorry, you're running over here. She.
So now comes some fireworks again, which I don't think is the best to make, to help make change, but sometimes it's necessary. And what I will say is we're going to hear about Kevin Albert. We've already heard about Proctor. They are making at least some kind of change here. They are making, you know, police oversight seem to be more apparent on these negative actions. They're being put on administrative leave with pay, having hearings, ending up without pay, being transferred out. No longer these people's problem, potentially somebody else's problem, but things are happening and it's, I mean, this is how it's supposed to work in America, peaceful protest, peaceful discussion, peaceful comments and questions that bring about necessary change. And by the way, if these, you know, administrative reviews and hearings and investigations turn up nothing, these people shouldn't be punished. Just because it may look bad or people think something should happen, that's not always how it works. But if you have legitimate, independent investigation, like the YSL trial with the judge, like Proctor's hearing and the Internal Affairs investigation, and maybe something that's happening in the future with Kevin Albert, we need to have a system that we trust so that we can trust the results.
He's getting yelled at and yelling and you can't break here.
Ms. O'Donnell, Ms. O'Donnell. You said you were going to be quiet. You were disruptive. It is time for you to leave. Ms. O'Donnell, it is time for you to leave.
I honestly can't even tell if they're fighting with each other, if they're fighting with other people in the room, but it's a little bit of chaos. It's not great. It's, it's pretty embarrassing, I think, for the board. But it is what it is.
Ms. O'Donnell.
You ran over here while I was speaking to her. She just sat there screaming at the crowd and the crowd screaming, "Don't ever stay here." No, I'm not. It is out of the book. No, it's inappropriate. Uncool for law, the way it's intended to be upheld. I'm upset because I feel unjustly. No, you're standing in front of me while everyone else does the same thing.
You to go.
I may be disrespectful, meaning that I'm right fucking Americans, people. Remember it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Thank you, officer. All right, before we get on to the next agenda item, we have two statements to read. So Mr. Albert, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first.
First Albert's going to read a statement and then the board has another statement and these two are important as well.
Hey, as many of you know, I've had two recent verbal altercations with members of the public outside of my role as a select board.
So that was important. Had two verbal altercations, as many of you know, outside of my role as a select board member. That is the CYA legally. He was not acting in his official capacity. So any negativity that comes from that lawsuits or otherwise is his personal issue, not the board's issue, not Canton's issue, not the citizens issue. Very important.
With members of the public outside of my role as a select board, despite the tremendous harassment, stress and anxiety that my family, extended family, and I have been subjected to over the past 16 months, my interactions were inappropriate. And as an elected official, I am held to a higher standard and I am.
So of course he qualifies it with the caveat of with the extreme, you know, harassment, but I gotta be honest. I appreciate the fact that he's owning up to it, owning up to his part, that he should not have interacted like that. He is held to a higher standard as a board member. He, what his actions do reflect the community. So I appreciate that he said it. If you want to say he didn't mean it, if you want to say it was, you know, BS or whatever, that's fine. I appreciate it. I like when people own up to their mistakes. And he's going to say something else basically like, I won't do it again. I'm looking at you here and on the record, I'm saying I won't do it again. Even though he kind of made his excuse about the harassment, that still exists and he still now says, I was wrong and I'm not going to do it again. So I hope he's being honest. I hope it's true. And I personally appreciate the fact that he is owning up to it and trying to do better, which is all we can really ask. I know one of the commenters said, you know, that's all we hear from you guys is we're going to try to do better. We need action, but all right, so let's listen to his kind of full statement here.
And I have been subjected to over the past 16 months, my interactions were inappropriate. And as an elected official, I am held to a higher standard. And I understand that the residents of Canton expect public officials to always conduct themselves professionally and focus on the business of the town. I apologize for my recent reaction and will refrain from any further public incidents that are unbecoming as a member of this Canton Select Board. Thank you.
He refrained from doing that in the past and he agrees that they're unbecoming of a member of the Canton Select Board. I personally, I think that's good, good move, good move. And the right move to do it officially in front of everybody with the world watching, right? Not behind closed doors or just some post somewhere or somebody else, you know, says that he said something, but him saying it personally.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. An additional statement, Chief Rafferty has placed Kevin Albert on paid administrative leave while an outside, and please be quiet. While an outside independent investigation is being conducted relative to his actions in a case he investigated with Michael Proctor approximately two years ago. Kevin Albert was placed on leave on June 13th and will remain on leave until the results of the investigation are provided by the outside independent investigator.
Wow. So then he just kind of drops that little nugget at the end. That Kevin Albert on admin leave, based on an investigation did with Proctor, we can assume it's the one where he, you know, they got drunk and were driving around and he lost his badge and his gun. We don't know that, but we can assume that. And he was put on leave June 13th. So it's almost a month before they announced it. People still didn't know because they were still complaining. What are we going to do? Where's the accountability? I think they're creating some change. I think they're creating at least some accountability. Now the sad part is the citizens have to find out about the problem before anybody does anything about it. And that's not really how accountability works. The police department should be providing accountability when they find out about something. And they should be looking for problems and looking for the best people and way and procedures to make it fair and how they protect and serve.
All right. All right.
All right. So that was it. So I think that that was the gist of everything that I think could have applied to this case and that has kind of the any legal angle to discuss and how it could affect the future trial or future potential civil lawsuits from Karen Reed and maybe others, it sounds like. So let me know what you guys thought of this video. Hit the like button if you enjoyed it. Put your questions and comments down in the comments. I'm definitely going to read through them. This is really interesting and kind of a different aspect and different way to look at things. And hearing straight from the horse's mouth. And seeing what accountability might look like in the future and how peaceful public protests and questions might actually create change in our country. So I appreciate everybody joining me. Until next time, I'm out of here. Thanks for watching another episode of The Lawyer You Know. If you enjoyed the episode, please hit the thumbs up and share with your friends who may be interested here on YouTube. And don't forget to subscribe. You can also follow us on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook and TikTok. And don't forget to check out The Lawyer You Know Podcast with new seasons dropping every quarter. If you have a case you want to talk to us about, if it's a personal injury case, wrongful death, catastrophic injury, car accident or slip and fall case, please email us at lawyeryouknow@gmail.com. And of course, all these links I just mentioned are included in the description below on this episode and every episode. So until next time, this is Peter Tregos, The Lawyer You Know.